My name is Mike Broderick and I'm a resident of Nashua for 28 years. The Right to Know Show is aimed at providing citizens' knowledge of common issues, policies, and the decision-making process that affects the lives of the city they live in. My mission is to help the citizens understand city policies so that they may make informed decisions to improve the lives in the city where they live. I wish to inform, educate, and enlighten the citizens of Nashua because they have the right to know. The shows we hope to bring our encouraging input about what would you like us to talk about? Today and the following weeks, we are going to have a panel discussion for people who are running for the school board. I would like to introduce the candidates for school board. Sandra Zee.
Welcome.
Mr. Thomas Vaughn, Ms. Dottie Oden. Unfortunately, the other candidates could not be with us because they had prior graduates. Before we start, I would just like to let the citizens know where they go to vote. Ward one is the Broad Street Elementary School in 390 Broad Street. Ward two, Charlotte Ave. Elementary School, 48 Charlotte Ave. Ward three, Amherst Street Elementary School, 71 Amherst Street. Ward four, Led Street Elementary School, 139 Led Street. Ward five, Main Dunceville Elementary School, 20 Whitford Road. Ward six, Fairgrounds Middle School, 27 Cleveland Street. Ward seven, Dr. Norman Chris Elementary School, 296 East Dunceville Road. And ward nine, New Searls Elementary School, 39 Shady Lay. Welcome. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for having me.
First, I'd like you just to tell the citizens a little bit about your personal and your political background.
Okay. My name is Dottie Oden. I was born and raised in Portland, Maine after I got through college. I have a BS in elementary education. I went down to Connecticut to teach. Met my husband there and we moved to Massachusetts, had a couple of children, and then we ended up here in Nashua. I was fortunate enough to stay home and raise my family. Because I have a love of education, ran for the school board back in 1992, served from '92 to '95. At that time, Dr. Massey and Joe Giuliano had said there was a policy that you had to wait two years before you worked in the school district if you had been on the school board. So I happened to bump into a principal a little after two years, and they had an opening for a paraprofessional. So I went back with a master's degree as a paraprofessional, and you see a lot of that today. And was fortunate enough, a year and a half later, to get a position teaching fourth grade at Amherst Street School. And I spent 14 years there and just retired in June, so.
You're enjoying your retirement, aren't you, for the school board, I see?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. I hope I get on there and it keeps me busy. I have a new grandson and I'm going to babysit him. Thank you, but no.
Mr. Vine?
So I'm, my name's Tom Vaughn, and I was born and raised in Fort Smith, Arkansas. It's a small town in Arkansas, about the size of Nashua. In some ways, it's pretty similar to Nashua. I came east to go to school at a small school outside of Boston, Tufts University. After graduation, I stayed on in the Boston area. Met my wife at, we were both working for a research project studying the health of air traffic controllers. I joined Digital Equipment in Syracuse, New York, on a joint project with Kodak to develop software for that project. Kodak, this was a few years ago, Kodak had the crazy idea, or it seemed crazy at that point, that given the right tools, people would make images of their documents and store them on computers as opposed to file cabinets. We moved to Nashua about 25 years ago when I was transferred to Spitbrook. And I stayed with Digital Equipment and Compaq and then HP until I retired a few years ago. So both my kids went through the Nashua school system, K through graduation. My wife was a teacher in the school system for a number of years. About 2004, I got very uncomfortable with the real stresses on the school budget and the contentiousness that I saw between the Board of Education and the Board of Alderman and the mayor. I ran in 2005, was elected, and then, you might remember, shortly after that, we had that small problem with Julia Earl.
That wasn't small.
No.
Very memorable.
I ran again in 2010 and was reelected, and you might remember, we had the problem with Chris Hoddle at that point. So I have my fingers crossed that nothing like that will happen this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Zee.
My name is Sandra Zee, and I am currently serving my second term on the school board, eight years. I am also currently the county commissioner for Hillsborough, so I serve double service, hopefully, to the betterment of the public. And I'm married, I have five children, 11 grandchildren, I'm grandma. I own Harmony Real Estate, been in real estate in the Nashua area since 1972. And, but to be honest with you, my political life now seems to take up a lot of my time, so I, but, but real estate was a good, it was a good bridge for public service because in real estate, you're constantly dealing with people and it's all about service. And I think any kind of public offices should be about service, and I certainly think my fellow candidates here tonight amplify that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with you, Mr., the first question with you, we'll go around and I'll change as we go along. What is your position on Common Core? Are you in favor of having more time, or do you completely reject the Common Core state standards?
Well, my concern with Common Core in this data-driven era of education, is there's no data to back up that it's going to make education better or worse. I have a very strong concern that Bill Gates has been so influential with his money in Common Core. He has spent $150 million building Common Core, giving to all the different foundations and companies that have, the National Governors Association and the Council for School Officers and Achieve and the Student Achievement Partners, of which David Coleman is head, one of the owners, and he's the chief architect of Common Core. And if you look at Bill Gates' record in education, he came out with the Small Schools Grant back in 2000. He wanted to make all the high schools smaller. And in 2008, he walked away from it because it didn't work. And where the, the country has put, or the leaders in education, that are leading education in the country today, have put a lot of eggs in his basket, and he's bought a lot of those eggs. And I have real concerns that we could be in worse shape. He was on a program the other night with David Rubenstein at Harvard, and he said, "We won't know for 10 years whether our education stuff," which I found rather offensive, "works or not." That's a long time to wait, that's a long time to put the kids in hold to see whether it's going to improve anything or not. And with the testing that goes with it, the expense of it, the data gathering, which is another concern for a lot of people, I have real concerns about Common Core. I don't think people should look at it lightly, I don't think it should be adopted without a lot of deep conversation, but I have, I have a lot of concerns about it.
Thank you. Mr. Vine?
On the Common Core?
Yes.
Well, I think I have a slightly different opinion. I do agree that it's a, it's a big change. New Hampshire has the Common Core standards as part of, as its literacy standards and its mathematics standards, has a number of other standards that it calls the, can you help me out here, the College and Career Ready Standards. So Common Core is a part of the picture in New Hampshire. I have a feeling that, it's a funny issue because many of the things that I'm in favor of are changes that we've made to the curriculum and to the way we're doing instruction that were made not in the context of Common Core, but would support Common Core. So as I look at the Common Core standards, I like the fact that there are, that they are more demanding, and I like the fact that there are fewer standards. I think having so many different targets to hit makes it more difficult for, for teachers. But I, I like the change that I'm seeing that's happened, happening with instruction. I like the, I like the way that we're beginning to teach math in a, in a problem-solving oriented way. I like the emphasis in literacy on, I like the new emphasis on writing, and I like many of the other things. So I think that, for me, I see it as an improvement. When I look at our kneecap scores from 2006 to 2012, I see 25% of our third graders are not proficient, and a little in reading and more in math. I think it's time for us to make a shift, and we've begun this shift already. So I don't really want to see us have to stop and go in a different direction or to hold. I'd like us to move ahead, and I'd like us to judge very carefully and see whether it's making an improvement, but to move ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Zee.
I would have to agree with Mrs. Oden. Tom's very aware, we have had some wonderful discussions on the board, and I'm grateful that we have had several. But my concern, I guess when I look at it, I always get down to the classroom because I believe, one of our educators said, "The magic happens in the classroom." And I believe with all my heart, that's where it does happen, because magic is when kids learn. That's magic. When you see a child open their mind and grasp an idea and you know they got it, it's the happiest, it's the greatest rewarding thing in the world. And my concern is that a lot of our kids are not on grade level, a lot of them. I want to say, I asked the question last night, in fact, at the meeting we had at the school board, I said, "Of our approximately 13,000 kids, how many, total would you say are on grade level?" They were going to get back to me, I sprung out of surprise. So I, out of courtesy, I'm going to give them a little time to come up with the conclusion. My conclusion is, the figure is not, is not a good one. I would estimate at least 50% of our kids. And when you look at Common Core, I go with my hands, I talk with my hands, I'm going to try and tie them down. But the thing is, when you have Common Core, each grade level starts at the, at that level. And if you're not ready for that level, if you're below that level, it's like being thrown in the pool to swim, and you can't swim, and you just keep sinking a little deeper and a little deeper. So that's my major concern because I think that, that we have somewhat of what I would consider a no-fail policy in Nashua. Very few of our children are ever held back. The statistic that Dr. Schief gave us was less than 0.5%, so less than a half of a percent. And so that tells you that basically, we don't hold the kids back. And so if you're going to do that, you have to have remedial throughout their education to try to catch up those who come in behind. And we don't have funds for that. So, so the system we're, in my view, the system we're using doesn't work, I'm sorry, it just doesn't. And Common Core with coming in expecting, and they're already struggling, and now they're going to raise the bar, and they're going to have to start at a higher bar when they don't even reach the bar they're already struggling to get to. So I just don't, I mean, all of the things that Mrs. Oden said concern me, but more than anything, I'm concerned about our kids, we're not competing globally. We just are not. I do agree with Tom on that. And it's a sad loss. Go ahead, Tom.
Since I'm the...
Odd man out.
The odd man out.
We love you.
I think it's interesting that one of the criticisms that, and I do agree that there is, there's a, that I'm, I'm, I think there's going to be a transition period. I don't think it's going to be 10 years, and I've already had a fairly frank discussion with the superintendent that I'm not going to wait 10 years. But I, I think that one of the criticisms that's been made of education very frequently is that we don't demand things of our students, that our students are, it's not as hard as it was when other people were in school. I think that we can, that we cannot demand, but we can ask our students, we can set the bar higher, and our students can rise to that. And I think that they can rise to that if we keep doing things maybe the way we've been doing them for, for a while, that will be harder. But I think what I'm, what has been going on in Nashua is a real reexamination of how instruction is done. And you've been, you've been a big part of this and of curriculum. And I think that those are, those are things that will boost our students and help them to reach that, that higher bar, so.
Do you think the classroom sizes are too big for the children to comprehend what's being taught?
We might all three agree on this one.
I do, in a lot of cases. I came from Amherst Street School, which is the Title I school, and my colleagues that I left are facing 25 kids in first grade. That's an awful lot of kids. It is, it's too many. And plus, they have intensive needs kids, they have ELL kids, they have quite a span. We have kids, I've had kids come into school that didn't know the difference between a two and a three, that couldn't count beyond one. And I think Mrs. Zee is right, we have kids coming in and they're saying, I looked at the expectations and the math for Common Core, and I thought for grade one, looking at our kids, they were exceptionally high. And that's one of the critics of Common Core say, there was, there were no early education specialists on the committee. The committee, you read different things, I've read 135 people, I've read 29 people, of which only three were not representing an educational business on the committee. So I do have concerns that, you know, we have always been told, "You have to teach these kids where they're at." And Common Core, for a lot of the kids that I worked with away up here, and I was reading an article today, it said they thought that early, the early standards, like for, for the primary grades, maybe hit the top 5% of kids. And that's, that's pushing it a little bit, a whole lot, because they're only kids once, and we're trying to force so much into them. And I think you have to be careful because there is a lot to child development, and I think we, we have to step back and look and see what we're doing.
One of the things, too, when, when I think about class size, because you hear, all timers will say, "Oh, well, when I grew up, they had 40 in a class, or they had 50 in a class." And, and I think that people need to recognize that our classes today are different than the classes were 50 years ago. We have mainstreamed every diversity you can conceive of. And if you want to do that, that's fine, but I think when you're doing that, you have to recognize that you have to balance it. If you're going to put that diversity, you have to have smaller classes. If you have one or two in there that don't speak English, you have special education, I was told that at Charlotte Avenue, we have four fifth-grade classes with 28 kids in it. And I was told that in those classes, they have special education kids who stay in there all day. Now, you will hear the comment that, you know, "We put them in there for a little while, but we take them out." But there are classes where they stay in all day. And I remember the last class I was in, there was a little special education child there, and I don't begrudge, please no, we, every, we all, that's something you don't control. And certainly, every child deserves an education. I would never, I want to give every child the best they can get. But I don't want to penalize 28 for one or two or, or, or more, whatever the circumstance is. And if you have, this day that I was in there, this little, this young child walked around talking to himself, arms flailing, body, and he had a one-on-one para, and she followed him, saying, "Shh, sit down, don't do that." And, and the problem with that is that the other kids are watching him. They're not listening to the reading, they're not, they're not studying, they're saying, "Well, what's wrong with him? Why doesn't he sit down and be quiet?" And so I think that, and it's all about money, it's all about resources, in my view. If we don't have enough money to hire paraprofessionals, paraprofessional, my personal view is that most paraprofessionals make less than $20,000. And they, like Mrs. Oden said, some of them have master's degree, and many of them have degrees. And so what better value can we get for our money? But we can't afford to hire as many as we need because we don't have the resources. And I will throw in my political plug here, Tom. We can afford to pay $4 million for the sidewalks in downtown Nashua, but we cannot afford, I mean, hello, to me, that speaks of bad priorities.
Well, they're not serving sausages at the school, so I don't...
Sorry, that's an unkind thing.
What is, what was a little frustrating about the class size issue is that, is for years, we looked at average class sizes, and, because that's what we report to the state, right? And so if you look at average class sizes, people would say, "Well, I think the class sizes are large, you look at the averages, and they, they look pretty good." If you actually look at the individual class sizes, then what you find is, you find that you have pockets of very large class sizes. And you find that you do have some very large class sizes at the lower grades. And there's some really good research about the impact of small classes, especially in the early grades. So I think that we hear a lot that you can't possibly reduce all the class sizes in Nashua to 18 students because there's not enough money. Okay, I understand that, but I think we can attack some of the very large class sizes, and especially those, if you have lots of first-grade class sizes that are large, that does not seem good. And that's something that we can focus on in a reasonable way.
We had the best meeting last night. Tom is chairman of budget for school board, and he does an excellent job. And last night, we were talking about the expenses that are going to come up next year. And one of the most interesting things, I think, that came out of that meeting was that Nashua has 150 homeless, that means they have no permanent address, homeless students. So in that 28 or 29, you could have several who, who have no, they're not even nowhere, they're going to go home and eat dinner that night. They don't know if they're going to have a bed, a pillow to put their head on. And so when you have 28 or 29 in a class, even 25, how can you give them the individual attend, how can you follow the child? Another program that was going to, another miracle program that was going to cure all our ails. And I tell you, I am convinced that the only way to, to cure our ails with these children is to have smaller classrooms and more individual attention for their personal needs. You cannot meet the individual need of 28 kids, one person by themselves. I mean, how can you do that?
You had five children, you should know how difficult that is.
I didn't meet all five of theirs.
I want to add on to what Sandra said. Having taught first grade for so many years, we would get kids that had been in kindergarten with a one-on-one para, come to first grade, and they would have one para to share. And when you have the academic of first grade, that, that can be a lot. There are a lot of kids that need one-on-one paras, but because of cost and looking at the money, we're not doing those kids the best that we could do if we could get more paras into the, into the classroom. And that's a concern of teachers, because a lot of these kids have IEPs, and you have to meet, those are legal documents, and you have to meet them, and the teachers, teachers are very conscious of that. So, you know, it's, it's a tough situation. Although, you know what struck me? I was watching one of your board meetings, or I was reading the minutes one time, and Mr. Conrad made the, made the statement that the class sizes at the high school are smaller than the, than the elementary schools. And to me, that's wrong. You need your, your smaller class sizes, especially in the primary grades. It's the foundation of everything. If they don't get it there, then, they, they usually don't get it, there aren't too many. So I, I think to, to support the preschool, the preschool has been really, really important for a lot of kids.
I don't think that's the class, the case anymore, though. I believe that some of our high school classes are 28, 35, I think they, am I remembering that correctly?
35, you're paying overages?
No, I think we probably are not, we're not, we're not paying as, a lot of overages, but I don't, I don't, I'm not, don't believe that our, our high school class sizes at this point are, are, are small.
Then that's been remedied?
Well, our, our class, our enrollment at the high school has declined some, and that, and that helps. So you mentioned, I believe, that the, the classroom is not the same, and it's not, it's not. I was sort of thinking back in my, you know, elementary school days, and we had the kind, we had those desks that attached to the floor, and we actually had the, the old inkwells.
Yes.
We didn't have the, the quill pens.
Unfortunately, I remember that also.
I remember that, too, but I wasn't going to say that.
I can remember in one of my classes, I could barely see the teacher, there were so many rows. But the teachers, the teacher, the teacher stood at the front of the room and instructed.
Yes.
And, I mean, you know, God bless them, they were good. But today's classrooms don't work that way. There are multiple things going on, there are multiple activities going on, and there are multiple activities for multiple groups of folks. And in some senses, I don't know, in some senses, that may help to, to, to sort of do what is the quote differentiated instruction. In some ways, it make it, make it more complex. But in any case, I think that interactivity, that's, I think, what fuels a lot of kids, especially at the early grades. If you can get them involved.
But we do have some, Tom, we do have some, you may be right in some classes, but some of our classes you are allowed, like choir and art and those.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I remember that we had a, a music class at Elm Street Junior High, I think it had 90-some, it was, it was mammoth, it was absolutely ludicrous.
It was not a choir, it's not a choir class.
It was outrageous.
I mean, if you have a choir, you can have a very large choir and do it, but it was a music class.
And we ended up hiring extra paraprofessionals, but even, how much can, how much can one or two, when you get that many children in one, young people, adults, whatever they are, in one, and I think they have at the high school, they also, so, so maybe I am confusing the critical classes like math and English and, you know, with the art.
There are large chorus classes, but, well...
And some of the others are, are, I thought, larger, too.
The difficulty that I have is that we, we did ask the same questions about the high school, and we got a long list of the class sizes, and then we, we got a very instructive session by the two people who do the, the scheduling, and they said, "Look," and they told us a lot of things about the stresses and strains, and they said, "Don't look at these figures." So I don't know what the figures are, but...
Okay, I'm going to move on to my next question. What's that with you?
We could have eaten that one to death.
I know that. If you could change something in the schools, what would it be?
Could change something in the schools. There probably would be a, well, there probably would be a few things I would change. I, you know, I would like to, I would like, I would like to, I'd like to really implement the new ideas that people have about instruction, and I'd like to reduce the class sizes where we can. Okay? And I'd like to make sure that we hold on to the kind of teachers that I think we really have, which are people that are, for the most part, very dedicated, very hardworking, and very able.
Thank you. Zee?
I'm a real maverick, I'm a real troublemaker. And, and I tell you honestly, I look at the monies we, we are not going to better our classrooms without more resources in the classroom, and that means we have to have more money. And economically, our stakeholders are not going to be able to give us but so much. So we're going to have to do more with what we have. And so my thing is, we have to look at what we have and say, "How can we better utilize this money?" And I have to tell you, people always complain about how much the teachers make. Well, if I compare how much the administrators make to how much the teachers make, I think the disparity is, is, and Tom will disagree with me, and it's all right. Most people disagree with me, as I say, I'm the maverick. But when I look, we hired, we took somebody from a school teacher this year with three years' experience, as I recall, making in the 40s, to an assistant principal, and we took him into the 80s. Now, I don't see too many people getting raises like that today, and I, and, and Mr. Conrad wants to create a salary scale, which we do not have for our unaffiliateds. When you talk to management types, they're called unaffiliateds. And we don't really have pay scales. And so he has been trying for some time to create a pay scale. From my, from my view, and the other thing that bothers me is that we have critical shortages like science, certain subjects, we, we have a hard time.
Certain subjects, we, we have a hard time getting enough teachers. And yet, uh, when that person can go from a critical shortage to being an assistant principal and make a fifty, sixty percent raise, he, they would be crazy not to do it. And so, what, we're, we're actually doing two harms there, in my view. We, we are taking a, a master teacher, somebody who has the ability to, to have that magic moment when the child's mind gets it. And, and we're putting them as an administrator, which in my view, when, when they're, when their topic is one of critical shortage, and they are a master teacher, I think that's a second mistake that we make.
I, I would agree there that, that one of the things that I really, that I really liked in the, the area that I was in, it's computer software, is that there were parallel ways to rise. And what I mean is that there were people, I had friends who ended up in, were managers, became really skillful managers. I also, and this is kind of the way I went, is that there, there was a parallel track for those people who wanted to stay in technology. And I think that, I'm sorry to use that analogy, but I think in teaching, you have people that, you have people that loved, love kids, want to, want to help, loved teaching, but wanted to be administrators. But you have, you have teachers who want to teach, and they are so skillful that they could mentor and expand the teaching skills of others. Now, we've, we've talked a little about this, but that's something that I wish I'd thought of when you asked me. But if I could just, uh, we have actually tried to compare our salaries, especially our administrative salaries, with information that we can get. There's a survey that's done every couple of years. And the last time we compared our salaries, they were pretty much comparable to the administrative salaries. We're talking now about principals and assistant principals that, in other places. In fact, I think ours were a little on the low side for assistant principals. I guess the other thing, I'd just like to give a little shout out to our principals and assistants principals because.
You want to change them?
I want to, no, I want to give a pat on the back because I think they're, I think that a good principal and a good assistant principal are, are critical for a good school.
And I'm not, I'm certainly not too distant.
If my child is in third grade, or is in your class, I'm, you know, I'm happy I've got a fantastic teacher, okay? But the, the health of that school, there's some really good research on the fact that principals, principals have an influence. They're not just there collecting a salary. And I think sometimes we, in an effort to do the right thing, we kind of, we kind of dump on them a little.
Mrs. Oden, what would you like to change?
Well, that's the question.
You thought you were going to get out of that, didn't you?
No!
But I, I was listening to Tom when he said, you know, the, talking about the parallel tracks. I would have never wanted to be an administrator. I, I absolutely loved teaching. That was my end-all and be-all. I had no desire whatsoever to be an administrator. I, I guess for me, coming out of the classroom, I'd like to see more support for the classroom in Nashua. I'm very concerned that professional development is taking teachers out of the classroom. That's where the kids are. And the, the district has made a habit, let me explain. Years back, teachers needed fifty hours of professional development within a three-year period. And the fifty hours could not come out of the school day. You could not get any professional development credit if you were getting paid by the school district. Then it went to seventy-five hours, and you could take a day off and go to a conference, and that would, that was considered professional development. When I left, I was finishing my three-year cycle. I had a, I think, like a hundred and seventy-three hours of professional development. What, what happens now, they take you out for, okay, you're going to come out and you're going to have collaboration, and they leave a para in your room. I have seen teachers pulled out for IC training, uh, which is instructional consultation, consultation. LLI, which is a, a reading program. How to manipulate the whiteboards. They're taking them out of the classroom. Teachers should be in the classroom. It's not the district's, it's not in the kid's best interest to have the district pull the teachers out of the classroom. The district needs to work on being a little bit more creative about professional development and just not pulling the teachers out and leaving them with the sub or a para-professional. That, that is one of my, my big concerns, what's going on in Nashua. So, I would like to see that.
I've heard from people on that, at, this was actually at the high school. And a person spoke to me and said, my daughter has terrific teachers. I went, terrific? And they said, but they're out of the classroom for, for, and I sort of said, that's really odd. And I checked in, and, and there were, it was for training and other things.
But this is the healthiest, in my view, the healthiest thing the, the city can do, any city can do, is have honest, open dialogue, where everything is thrashed out, where every idea, nobody, everybody has value. We all bring something to the table. And we, we need to have more open conversation, in my view. We, we need to have more people who are willing to say, I disagree. And it doesn't mean that you're right or I'm wrong. I like chocolate, you like vanilla. But, but by getting it all out there, everybody knows more. And, and I think our, our, our city will be better, our schools will be better, our, I just think it's, it's healthy. So, I'm delighted. We have, we have two, we have six candidates for four positions this time.
This is all it's telling me about.
That's almost never happened. It's very, it is, it's wonderful. And I, I have to say, I'm delighted because I don't ever remember, in my two times that I ran, having a conversation like this that was going to be aired on TV for the public to hear. So, if people are really interested, they'll be able to know the difference. And so, I applaud you for your transparency.
I do, I applaud. Okay, recently, tag was banned at the Charlotte Elementary School.
Oh, here we go.
Do you support this ban? And would you impose this ban at elementary schools? And if you did, what would you suggest to implant in its place? We'll start with, um.
Oh, me?
Question three, I think, this is Mrs. Zee, I'm sorry.
It's all right, I don't mind.
No, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be fair.
No, no, I don't mind, and I certainly, this is something that, there's been an awful lot of conversation about it. And I have to tell you, first off, I'd like to say to the public, the principal at that school, in my opinion, is one of, she's the cream of the crop. She's wonderful. She's, she's a caring, committed professional, and she gives it everything she has. She, this came, I believe this is a, a discipline issue, in my view. These, we have, we, kids are bullies, they, they are. And, and we had four concussions, one child had two concussions. My granddaughter got hurt out in, in a playground situation. And she ended up with a hearing loss as a result of it. So, when you're talking about safety, you're talking about an important issue. And if you think about it, going back to Charlotte Avenue, they have four fifth-grade classes of twenty-eight. So, a hundred and twenty kids out on the playground, all at the same time. And once they start touching each other, they tend to get overactive. And some of them are absolutely mean. And inevitably, I think, frequently anyway, the small child comes out at the end of the stick. And so, I think that when, when a principal or a teacher repeatedly.
They're your sticks and tags, isn't it?
Maybe that was a bad parallel. But I, all I'm saying is that if you repeatedly tell a child, you can't do that, you can't do that, you can't do, and they continue to do it, at some point, a penalty needs to be. I believe discipline is one of, another big problem we have. I believe that our teachers don't have, are not given, in, 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 in our day, Michael. It was totally different. You, you got in trouble at school, you came home, you got in trouble again.
You didn't tell your parents because you get trouble.
Right. I, see, I believe this is a discipline issue, and I believe that we need to support. I believe, if anything, our district needs more discipline, not less.
Mrs. Oden?
You know, I don't know what, what they did before they banned tag. And I think that has a part in this. From my experience at Amherst Street, of course, we had first graders, and they can get aggressive too. But what we used to do with the first graders is, okay, you stand on the red line for five minutes, and you think about what you did and what could have happened. And, you know, we go through that, and, and then you try to let the child go back and say, yeah, I can do it. You know, you keep an eye on them. But, you know, I don't know, I wasn't there, I don't know what these teachers had done. You know, so I really don't want to comment on that. I think it's a shame that it's been banned. But if things happened, if you're talking about all these concussions and all, that is a concern. But as I said, because I don't know what went on, how they dealt with the problem in the beginning.
I wondered how many, how many people they have out there supervising that hundred and twenty kids. Because if you're playing tag, that's a phys-, we're touching, we're getting in each other's faces. And so, to me, you need, but, but do we have, do we have the resources, really? How many para-professionals or teachers are out there? I doubt if it's enough.
I always went out with my class.
But do all the teachers?
No, I don't think that's the, it's not the norm.
Sometimes they, they might send a para out, but my, my, of course, I'm old school, but I always thought my responsibility was with my class, and I always went out with my class.
So, I. What's going on, how do you feel about it?
I think that, um, look, if you look at this, at what, at base, there had been a series of incidents in which, I guess, up to eight kids had been affected, and some of them had been affected seriously. So, for the, I was not, I would not be surprised if this principal would step in and say, you know, you know, let's stop this particular game, and then let's sort of, and then as a first step. I mean, principals have to make those kinds of decisions. I, you know, here I am, I can look at all the data, but the principals, they're making a decision in real time. So, I think that I, I support that kind of decision. I think that there are, I think I, to a degree, I, I will, I'll agree with Mrs. Zee that I think that, um, the underlying, people want to talk about the underlying causes. It's not the game of tag, it's the underlying causes. I do think that there are, I've heard, um, I think we have some discipline issues in our schools. And I, I think that they are in all of our schools, not just one or two schools. And I don't, I don't mean to make some sort of dark sense out of that, but there's some kids that are just acting out, and we need to address that. I, my understanding is that the folks that were supervising the kids on the playground are, are monitors. And they're not, they're not skilled teachers like you are that, and so, to give them firm guidelines, like not going to play tag, is, is a much more practical way of doing it. But I'm fascinated by the fact that this issue has taken off the way it has. It was on NBC News, uh, there was Mr. Fliegel in the comment, what, you know, it was the end of entrepreneurism. It, it's, it reminds me of something very early in my career. I, I got on the school board, I was focused with this budget stuff and, and the, you know, sorting out the relationships. And I started looking around at the number of decisions that principals have made that have ended up in the Supreme Court. Now, I don't think this is going to end up there, but it shows you that people tune in.
I hope not.
And that's actually not a bad thing.
Yep.
Can I just add to what each of them have said? They were talking about, they feel there's a discipline issue in the schools.
I'm learning, I'm learning, because I didn't think there was a while ago.
And they have something called superintendent's cabinet, where the teachers from each school go and sit down with Mr. Conrad. And we get the minutes, the teachers get the minutes. And that was brought up at superintendent's cabinet, that the teachers feel there's discipline problems in the school. Now, I know that Fairgrounds got a behavior specialist last year. And I don't know what's happened with the other schools, but I haven't seen any, any minutes of meetings, any more discussions of that at superintendent's cabinet. But I think that is an issue. The teachers have brought it forward, they are concerned.
And one of the issues with that is, if you get a, a behavior specialist for one school, is, is that a fair use of resources when the other thirteen, when the other schools may have just as great a need? Certainly, some of them must have as great a need, but going again to resources. If you don't have, everything costs money. And everything is about, to me, prioritizing. And I guess, you know, I, I tell you all here right now, the classroom is my priority, and everything else is second. And, and it doesn't mean that I don't respect, I do respect. We have a wonderful, uh, Mr. Nelson over at Fairgrounds is, I think he walks on water. He's one of the best principals. I love the man. We have wonderful people, we, we really do. Tom will tell you, one of the greatest privileges about being on the board is that we get to know these people. They come into our workshops and share their hearts, their classrooms with us. And, and that's the joy.
Occasionally, we get to meet great teachers too.
And if, and once in a while, we even get to meet the kids, and that's the best part.
That is true.
Well, I, this should probably be a quick question.
Too much out there.
Let's assume money is not an issue, okay? Would you be in favor of school uniforms? If money was not an issue?
I think school uniforms is a great thing. I think that it does away with this, you know, I've got Nikes and you don't, and, and this class thing where kids like to look down on each other and play foolish games. I, I think, and it's less expensive, I believe, in the long run for the parents.
Mrs. Oden?
I think it can be a community builder for, for schools. You look at the kids that go to the parochial schools that have the uniforms on, they're part of a group. And building relationships and having a community is very, very important in schools. If there was a school that was willing to try it, I certainly would support it. I, I think, you know, I, for about six years, I went to a school, parochial school, and I had to wear the uniform. I didn't like it, but I, I, I think it can be a community builder, yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
I, I kind of don't know the answer to that right now. I don't think it's the be-all, end-all. I was just thinking that, um, I think that the British schools, they, what they call, let me think, their, their schools are opposite, right? Whatever, whatever the equivalent of our elementary, public elementary schools are there, I think they do have uniforms. I, I, I like what Sodin said about trying it out someplace. I, I certainly wouldn't be a, I wouldn't be averse to that. I, I think it might work well, at, better at the lower grades than it would with middle school and high school.
It'd be hard to force somebody into it. But I think if you had a school or PTO that said, yeah, we'd like to try this at the school, I think it'd be good to support that and see if it makes a difference.
Okay, this.
That was quicker than you thought, right?
Thank you. Previous year, we had twenty-seven million dollars in grants. This year, we had twenty-four point nine million. That's an effective loss of two point one million. What effect has that had, impacted that on, on, on the schools with the loss of the grants?
I can, I can tell you one because I went to the board and spoke about it. At the Title I schools, we had after-school tutoring. And because of sequestration and the loss of Title I money, we no longer have the after-school tutoring. And, uh, supporting those kids is real important. We have, uh, in Nashua, something called, um, um, RTI, response to.
Intervention.
Intervention and RTI, which is response to instruction and intervention. And there's three tiers to it. And for kids that aren't making enough progress, we had that third tier, and we had to cut that out. And when you looked at the goals that the board had sent, had set for their five-year goals, that was one of the things that they wanted to do, was to support those kids. And I'm real concerned about losing that support for our, our Title I schools.
Mrs. Vaughn?
I, we've been look, working, trying to work through some, trying to work through some long-term goals, and in a goals and objectives kind of way. And one of the things that we've spent a lot of time discussing is, um, third grade is kind of a breakpoint because, at least in reading, you've, you've, supposedly, you now have the basics of reading, and you're going to use it to go forward and learn things. And so, you want to make sure that if kids are not at, are not proficient, then they're going to, they can fall increasingly behind. So, one of the things we were looking at was how, what could we do? And one of the things that we, we have really seriously been considering is, is providing some sort of tutoring. So, it was, um, it was, uh, it was kind of a shock when that happened. That was, that was, as you say, a, a loss of grant funds. But the tutoring, as far as I know, has been a, has been an effective tool. Not necessarily all of the people that we had tutoring, but in general has been.
One of the programs that was cut back was CHINs, Children in Need of Services. And I go again to our conversation about the hundred and fifty homeless children. And I ask you, does it make a difference if that child comes into class with having worked through all of the emotional problems that come along with being homeless? worked through all of the emotional problems that come along with being homeless? One of the things, CHINs provides that kind of support system, a, a counseling or, or a psycholog, to, for this child to be, at least that's my understanding. Now, I'm not, I'm not an educator, I, I wish I were. Truthfully, I feel the, the big thing I have is common sense, and, and so, that, that's the only thing I, and I'm grateful for that. But, but I'm not an educator, but when I, when I look at these children who come to us with multiple problems, and we're not able to, when I, then they come to class not prepared to learn. And if you're not, again, it's like being thrown into a swimming pool to swim when you can't swim. And so, you're, you're going to flounder around, and, and it's going to be an unfortunate, unhappy. And that's, to me, the bad thing about it is, that once you've established this pattern of, of not succeeding, then they lose the willpower, they lose, they start to think they can't win, and they give up. And that's the worst thing that can happen, because, because then, because obviously, for any of us to do better, we have to have the willpower. And so, giving them the willpower to succeed is one of the big things. And certainly, Mrs. Oden knows about that more than I do, but my daughter was telling me this story about, she had a child came who was a street child, and she said he came in hungry, that his, he, she could hear his stomach growling, and he would come in, and she'd be trying to teach, and he'd start crying, I'm hungry, I'm, now, in the middle of the class, Michael. I mean, you can imagine. So, she said to me, so mama, I, I kept cereal in my bottom drawer, because I knew that when he was hungry, if I couldn't do something about the hunger, he wasn't going to learn anything.
It's not uncommon for teachers to have.
It's not uncommon.
And I, that's why I have been advocating, I have advocated for the last two years, and this year, we have bus children at Amherst Street School, although we have a breakfast program, they don't get there early enough to have their breakfast. We're spending over five million dollars on buses and transportation, and we can't get our kids to school early enough. I have real concerns about what's going on there.
Okay. We have thirty seconds, so in thirty seconds, I want to urge you to tell the citizens why they should vote for you for the school board.
Do you want me to start?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll let you go last.
I'll start.
You have thirty seconds.
I think, I think I'm qualified, I think I, I would be there for the right reason, because I'm not interested in furthering a political career, I want to be there to advocate for kids. I've done that since I was on the board almost eighteen years ago. If you look at the minutes, you will see me there advocating for kids over a period of time, and I want to continue to do that, because I think our kids are real important, and I think our public education system in this country is vital to our democracy.
Thank you. Mr. Vaughn?
So, I guess in thirty seconds, I'm an engineer, but I'm an engineer that loves education and loves helping to provide that education for our kids. And I think my, my skills, my analysis, and my prior experience on the board will help me do that.
I guess I'll take my thirty seconds and be a little different, not that I'm ever different. But I, you know, I think people know, Tom and I, we've been on the board long enough, they've seen our voting, they've heard our dialogue, they know who we are and what we believe in and what we're willing to fight for. So, I would say to the listening public, vote for Mrs. Oden, because I'm convinced that she's going to be a wonderful addition to our school board, because I see a passion and love for the kids. And that's what we need, we need to, we need to take care of these kids, that's what we need to do. So, please vote for Dottie Oden, that's my message.
Very graceful, thank you, thank you. And she has always advocated for kids.
Yes, I know. I would like to thank all of you, Mrs. Zee, Mr. Vaughn, Mrs. Oden, for coming here to our first Right to Know show. I look forward to our next show, and encourage the citizens to contact me with any ideas, subjects, or questions they may have. You may email me at dearmikeb@comcast.net. Thank you all, and be aware, because you care. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.